You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the Sand Hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Welcome, all of you, to the Monday, February 26th, Fayetteville City Council meeting. As we call a meeting to order, we will go to item 2.0, the invocation. We ask that Pastor Michael Mathis, Mission Fields Ministry, come forth and give us our invocation. We ask that all will rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, Lord God of the universe, we are so thankful for your presence here tonight. We acknowledge your sovereignty. God, we are forever grateful for your loving kindness and your mercy upon our country, all of mankind, and the whole world. God, we are always calling upon you and thanking you to be involved in affairs of mankind and involved in the things that are happening in our nation, especially in our city. We're forever remembering how frail we are and our great need for you to be involved and to guide us and instruct us and teach us, Lord, how to be good leaders, that we might live and prosper, especially here in Fayetteville. And always remembering that, oh Lord, in our frailty, we pause now in this moment of time to say, "Lord, forgive us for any unrighteousness, anything, God, that we've done to offend you, oh Lord, against what your will is for each of our lives." We repent, oh God, and we thank you for your loving kindness and how you continue to bless us. We are so grateful, God, for Mel Kovan and his family and his leadership of Fayetteville. We ask, God, that you would continue to keep your angels of protection around him and his family as he goes out and come in, not only for him, God, but all of the council members, God, and his staff, God, that you would continue to protect them and keep them. We live in very dangerous times now, and sometimes it's not who the leader is, but it's what they represent. And we ask, God, that you would keep them, always remembering our first responders who willingly put their lives in harm's way to protect us and keep us safe, God. We ask that your warring angels would be with them and keep them, oh Lord. Protect their families as they go out and come in. We thank you so much, God, for how you're blessing the city of Fayetteville, and so many wonderful things are happening, a lot to look forward here for. And so, God, now, as we already have an agenda, we pray, God, for wisdom to execute and to do the things, God, that we need to do, that city of Fayetteville would be a great place in the state of North Carolina. We thank you now, and we commit everything into your hands, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible)
Can we have the Girl Scouts come forth? Let's give them a round of applause. Ladies, we wanted to make sure we got it right, so we did a practice run, okay? All right, you all, if we can do it again with the Girl Scouts.
Follow your lead, ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, ladies. Yes, so if we can ask the troop leader, Ms. Boarderwick, and also Pastor Mathis, if you wouldn't mind, give us briefing about yourself, your ministry, any words you would like to say, followed by troop leader 1493, Ms. Deanna.
Mr. Mayor, I would first like to express my sincere gratitude in having the honor of participating in the invocations here with the council. My name is Pastor Michael Mathis. I'm the founder and senior pastor of Mission Field Ministries, which is located at 3429 Black and Decker Road. We are approaching 18 years now. We're a mission-oriented church. We, every month, from the inception of the ministry, we are very involved in the nursing homes, in the prison system. I'm personally involved with those things. I don't send people out. We just got approval through the Red Cross for the 16,000-square-foot building that we have to be a shelter in time of disaster. And we're doing some other things out there, getting more involved with the homeless here in Fayetteville. And so, we're very thankful to be a part and to hopefully continue to strengthen and uplift the moral fiber of this nation. I love America. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor and First Lady. Thank you. Also, if we could have troop leader, hello, Ms. Deanna.
Hello. My name is Deanna Boarderwick. I'm a co-leader of troop 1493, and we are out of the Hope Mills area, and we meet at the Good Shepherd Catholic Church. We are here tonight with 11 or 12 girls out of our troop who are here to earn their government badge, and we appreciate the opportunity for letting them come and learn about everything here and to even tour the 911 center. That was great, and I think they've had a lot of fun tonight.
Great. We're glad to have you. Thank you. Councils, we move to announcements. I'd like to defer to Councilmember Jensen. She has some very special guests in the audience tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a little, last week, I had the honor of going to Ireland Drive Elementary School to tie, I was one of the speakers with Chief Kelly and Chef Judy, and I was last, and I was like the most uncoolest person ever because they, the chief and Chef Judy really outdid me. But what my topic was, was dress, on the way you feel inside, make you feel good on the outside, and we talked about how to dress and things like that. So today, before our meeting, I got to speak to the Girl Scouts, so this is where, why I'm wearing my green today, is in honor of these beautiful girls back here. But when I was at Ireland Drive, I met Mr. Carmichael, and we had, it was during Black History Month, and we had some young students that came up and said their, "Who are we?" And the last boy did not get to finish, and he was very upset, and he did very well. And I said, "Don't you worry about it. We're gonna get you on TV at the city council meeting." So they have come here to give you what they have worked very hard on, and we're supposed to guess who they are. So I'm gonna send it over to Mr. Carmichael. And he does a fabulous job with these children at Ireland Drive. Great job.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, thank you. First, we'd like to thank you guys for having us here. We are definitely honored to be in the presence of you guys. With no further ado, and we bring your greetings from, of course, Ireland Drive Middle School and communities in schools, which we are partnering with the school to do. I would like to bring up the "Our Boys, Your Men" mentoring. While I was there, for the time that I was there, we decided to create that because I feel as if our boys are your men in this world, and I think we should train them up the way that they need to go. I want to bring up first Omari, Mr. Dockery. After that will be Misael, De La Cruz, and then Mr. Trevion Perry.
I was born August 4th. I was born August 4th, 1961. I was the first African-American commander-in-chief. Money doesn't make a change, but it makes a difference. Who am I?
I was the first athlete to win an award in four sports at the University of California. In 1947, I broke the Caliberian professional baseball. I was the first black person to be on the television analysis in MLB baseball. Who am I? I am an activist, and I don't support racism. I am an American actor, and I am best known for my role as Dr. Jackson Avery on the ABC television series Grey's Anatomy. I also appear in the 2013 film The Butler as civil rights leader Rev. James Lawson. I am famous for this quote, "The existence of your neighbor's pain is not dependent upon your belief in it, and we cannot improve a situation that we don't acknowledge. Learn from patterns is both basic and critical to the progress of human civilization." Who am I?[948.37][948.37](laughter) I am Jesse Williams.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Like to defer now to Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Zan Monroe to come up, and Angie Hedgepath, and Eric Vitale, and Mr. Arata, if you could put the PowerPoint slide up, possibly. These folks are working on a project called Build a Better Haymount. Mr. Monroe, who are you?
I often wonder that. It is Monday all day long. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council, thank you for your work and time to make Fayetteville a better place to live. I'm Zan Monroe. I'm the CEO of the Realtors Association. We service nine counties in eastern North Carolina that surround Fayetteville, 1,650 Realtors, and we are focused on making this a better place to live as well. We have obtained a grant from the National Association of Realtors to create a Build a Better Block project in Haymount. We've coordinated, or let me rephrase, these two people have worked tirelessly to coordinate with city and county government, the DOT, fire department, police, to create a one-day temporary, what could Haymount look like? And so, on March 10th, we will recreate the top of Haymount Hill. We will put the streets on a diet, make them thinner. We will put the sidewalks on a diet and make them fatter. We will create crosswalks, biking lanes, we'll create a plaza, seating, food trucks, art. We invite the entire city to come and walk and stroll Haymount. Bring the stroller, bring the dog, bring the kids, and see what a walkability or a walkable neighborhood feels like. In the United States, there are surveys that show Fayetteville as the least walkable city in the United States, and Haymount is a connector between downtown and the mall, but we blast right through it. It's got restaurants, it's got theater, it's got the post office, it's got frozen yogurt, it's got all the things that you need in a neighborhood, one afternoon, totally temporary, just to show you what could be. 1 to 5, March 10th. Bring the community. We invite you all.
And also, there's gonna be some food trucks there that day.
Yep.
At least four, possibly five. And Eric, will you tell us your relationship, because you're with the county of Cumberland?
Yeah, I actually work for the local MPO. I'm a transportation planner.
And the MPO stands for?
Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Thank you.
We do planning for Fayetteville and the surrounding area.
Once again, showing the city, the county, working together is one of your initiatives, Mayor. And Angie, thank you. Would you at least tell, tell us all the volunteer groups you're working with?
Yes, normally I'm used to sitting in the back of the room, but we have been working on this since June of last, of 2017, of last year. We have worked with the Arts Council. The Arts Council has provided us with some really great artists that are gonna set up shop for the day. We've worked with the city and the county extensively. The City Traffic Engineer, that whole group has been amazing to work with. They're gonna come out and set up, help us set up and get things very safety-oriented. We met with the fire, the fire station this morning. They're gonna bring out a fire truck for the kids. We've met, you know, just about with everyone we can think of. If you have other ideas, please email me, and again, we're really excited about this event, so.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you, Zan. Thank you, Eric. And thank you, Mayor, for allowing them to share.
Thank you. Thank you. This time, we'll defer, I'll defer to Councilmember Jensen, Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. So on March 8th, we are going to be hosting a community social, and we are asking that all of our wonderful residents come out and enjoy some time with your elected officials. We've asked all of your elected officials from the North Carolina General Assembly all the way to the city council and county commissioners to just come out and hang out with everybody, and we'll be dressed down. We're not wearing suits. We're just gonna have jeans and sneakers on, and we're just gonna hang out with you and answer your questions, and there's gonna be food provided, there's going to be some fun for kids, and it's just gonna be a really relaxed atmosphere. We'll also take some time toward the end to discuss some of the major projects that we have going on in the city. So if you have questions about those projects, this is definitely somewhere that you will want to be. Again, that's March 8th at E.E. Smith High School, starting at 5:30, and it will run until 8:00. And it is another opportunity where the city and the county have come together in collaboration because we work very well together on your behalf, and so we hope that you will come and hang out with us.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waddell. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One small positive thought in the morning can change your whole day. Join us, Coffee and Conversation, Coffee with the Councilman, Councilman Larry Wright, March 1st. That's on a Thursday from 9:30 to 10:45. Location, Cliftdale Regional Library, 6682 Cliftdale Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Please email any questions that you would like to discuss at this meeting by February 26th. Email all questions to teenwrightdistrict7, the number 7, at gmail dot com. Thank you. We'll meet you there. That's on Thursday, 1 March. Let your hair down. We can have some tea, too. No, that's, I'm sorry, make that by this Friday.
Good catch, Councilman Craig.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. And just before we move to the recognition for the FCYC member of the week, I'd like to, I promised, I had a very great time with the, with the young people at West Area Elementary School today, and part of their homework assignment was to watch a city council meeting, so I promised to shout them out, and the teachers will test them on that tomorrow, so great job, but get your homework done. Councilwoman Jensen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I would like to introduce Jalen from the youth council. I was gonna tell you a little story about meeting Jalen for the first time. I went to a meeting, and he kinda came around, and I saw him, and he came back around, and he had on this light blue suit with a nice bowtie, and he was just matching from head to toe. So he was walking around, he was showing his leadership, and I said, "You know, you're really dressed really nice." And he said, "Thank you." I was feeling a little bit insecure about it, but, you know, "Thank you." I said, "You look good." So we started talking to him, and I would see him at the meetings. Well, his dad comes up to me, and he's part of our city, our city family, and says, "Yeah, my son, and you have been talking, and he's gotten to know you, and you've gotten to know him." And I said, "It makes a lot of sense now. He's Mr. Campbell's son. He's a dresser. Dresses very nice. So the apple doesn't fall far from the tree." Dwayne's.
Got a strong grip.
So this is Jalen. I'm gonna let Jalen tell you a little bit about himself.
My name is Jalen Campbell. I attend Cumberland Polytechnic High School, and I'm a member of Fayetteville-Cumberland Youth Council. I was accepted into the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill and also Morehouse, and I was also accepted into Hampson, but right now, my decision between Morehouse or the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And I just wanted to take this time to thank all of the council members and also the county commissioners that we work very tight with them, and they have, they are paramount in our success and what we do in the youth council.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Congratulations, and let's give him a round of applause. That's a great accomplishment. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. This time, we'll ask that Mr. Phil Harris, Community Executive for the Sand Hills Chapter of American Red Cross, would come forth. May I pro tem mon, if you would?
Yes, this evening, we're gonna read a proclamation from the office of the mayor, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter was established on April 26, 1917, in response to a call from President Woodrow Wilson after the start of World War I to assist and comfort communities stricken by the siege, large and small, and to help the able-bodied and disabled veterans and civilians overseas. And whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter provides services to local military personnel and their families, including 24/7 emergency messaging, assisting military members and their families through pre-deployment and post-deployment briefings and seminars. And whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapters continues to partner with city and county government and civic agencies to help ensure our communities are more ready and resilient in the face of future disasters. And whereas each year the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapters provide shelter, clothing, food, and counsel to hundreds of area families who experience a home fire or other disasters such as tornadoes and floods. And whereas the American Red Cross plays a vital role in the relief operations by deploying volunteers to rebuild communities hit by disaster and by providing critical support and resources at home and across the nation. And whereas each year the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter trains thousands of local citizens and leads safer and healthier lives through lifesaving skills from swimming and lifeguarding to first aid, CPR, and AED. And whereas each year the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapters helps collect, test, and distribute thousands of lifesaving units of blood and blood products. And whereas our city's leadership relies upon our citizens who are motivated to act by our common humanity, this month, let us come together and celebrate Fayetteville's spirit of generosity and the dedicated individuals and organizations who keep that spirit alive. Now therefore, I Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of March in the year of 2018 in honor of American Red Cross Month."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. That's a mouthful to say, but the gist of it is that your Red Cross has been in this town for 101 years, and people think of us as the disaster and the big disaster, and we had that in Hurricane Matthew. But last year, we helped 155 families after a single-family home fire. So as a community, if we can come together, we talk about partnerships all the time. We're kicking that off in March as Red Cross Month, celebrating our volunteers. We've already kicked that off. We've installed free smoke alarms. We worked with the fire department this last week. We're out teaching hands-only CPR, because most people are gonna be saved by bystanders, as good as our emergency response people are. We're teaching Scrubby Bear, which Scruby's an adult in a bear costume, teaches the benefits of hand washing because flu is a cause of absenteeism in the school. So, long story short, your Red Cross has been here 101 years, and we'll be here 101 more. So thank you for your support. Thank you for your partnerships.
Thank you, Ms. Ash.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, sir, I just also, I wanna say thank you for all that you guys do. I'll never forget back during Hurricane Fran, we had a major flood, and it flooded my mom's home, and it took that situation for me to come, to become a regular contributor to Red Cross. So thank you for all that you all do. God, well done.
That's what we're doing, is celebrating volunteers that do that. We're a small staff, but it takes a community, and that's what we're celebrating in March. And everybody's got a great Red Cross story, either helping people or getting that benefit, so thank you for your shout-out.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for what you do, Ms. Ash. All right, moving right along, council. Item 5.0 is approval of the agenda. Item five point zero is approve of the agenda, entertain a motion to do so at this time.
Second, Mayor.
It's a motion by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Hare. Uh, the discussion, Councilmember Waddell? Oh, you were voting early. You ready to go? All right. Uh, council, ask for your votes at this time. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous? Item six point zero is the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent or make any changes. Uh, Councilmember Dawkins?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I wanna pull six point oh-nine. Option of a budget ordinance amendment. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Dawkins. Uh, that's a motion on the floor with the exclusion of item six point zero-nine. Uh, is there a second to that, or any other amendments? Second. Second by Councilmember Chris. Uh, any discussion on the Chris Dawkins motion? All right, council, ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous as well. Uh, item six point zero-nine, Mr. Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, we approve six point zero. Uh, the reason I wanted to pull this is, is our thing, we talk about communication, and uh, we wanna do a better job of communicating, and I want our citizens to be aware that, um, we're gonna be building about five and a half miles of sidewalks, um, when we hopefully pass this budget ordinance amendment. Uh, and it's gonna be out Rayford Road, so beginning in September timeframe, you're gonna see out past seventy-first, work going on to radically change Rayford Road, and that project's gonna take quite a few years. So what we're gonna do tonight is allocate the money, uh, to be used for sidewalks, crosswalks, other things that are gonna be added. And the other thing I wanna mention is, you're gonna be seeing a new newsletter, and Councilmember Art mentioned it last, uh, meeting, about the happenings, and that newsletter is also gonna be, um, copied over to our Facebook page. So not only will it be on our website, it's gonna be on our Facebook page. We're interested in finding new ways to communicate, uh, with our citizens, so that's why I wanted to pull it, make sure folks are aware, we're getting ready to spend a lot of money on sidewalks over these next few years. And uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve six point oh-nine, the adoption of the budget ordinance amendment.
Second. Thank you, uh, Councilman Dawkins, that's the Dawkins seconded by Councilmember Chris. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? All right, council, ask for your votes. Item six point zero-nine is approved unanimously. Madam Clerk? Thank you. Uh, just prior to moving to item seven point zero, the public hearing, like to acknowledge, uh, our female representative, Mr. Benton. He always comes with bearing gifts, with nice checks, I hope that you don't let me down this time.
That would be great.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Uh, item seven point zero is the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name, address, before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless by a previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And do we have special use permit? So we, uh, Madam Clerk, we have to, uh, have a couple of special use permits, so we need to swear in, uh, any, any of those giving testimony? Mr. Harmon? Well, he's the presenter.
Brian Lenins, Brandon Waller. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first case we have before you tonight is P seventeen twenty-nine F. Uh, this is a special use permit, uh, for a freestanding cellular communications tower. Uh, it's to be located in an LC commercial district, uh, at sixty-four ninety-one Ramsey Road, uh, which is at the intersection of Ramsey and McCloskey. Uh, and the owner of this property is South River Electric. As you can see from the diagram, you have, uh, the map in front of you, you have Ramsey Street, the major road out front. This is sat- one of, uh, South River's, uh, headquarters buildings. Uh, they're looking to put a communications tower here in the back portion of their property. This particular tower's a little different than what we typically see. Uh, this will not have, uh, commercial antennas on it, it will only have South River's antennas. Uh, their other location will have a similar tower, and this will allow them, uh, during, uh, things such as a natural disaster, like when the hurricane came through, uh, to be able to maintain, uh, uh, their, themselves, and keep up and running, and have communications between their two locations, which they were not able to do the last time. Property again, along Ramsey Street, uh, it, there is a mix of residential and commercial out in that area. Uh, this property is shown as, uh, commercial on our land use plan. Uh, as you can see, it is surrounded a bit by, uh, residential, uh, properties as well. Uh, just a street view, uh, from Ramsey Street to the front of the property. This is from McCloskey, this is the area out here where the tower would be located. Uh, and this is, uh, the, uh, so, the residential development that is just to the, uh, south of this particular property. Staff has and zoning commission recommended a couple of conditions with this particular project. Uh, one is compliance with the, uh, attached site plan and, uh, final review and approval by TRC. And then to also, uh, retain the existing tree line buffer, uh, along the south and west portions of the property, uh, which currently separates it from those adjoining townhomes I just showed you. Um, so there's already an existing buffer, and then they'll also have to put in a required buffer around the, uh, tower itself. The commission and staff both have recommended approval. Uh, the tower would be located on a ten-acre parcel in an area, uh, that is away from other development. Tower is set back more than double the required amount from all property lines. Proposal meets all of the, uh, standards of the city. Uh, those conditions, the two that I just read, uh, that are listed above, uh, that this proposal also meets the U-specific standards, those are listed in your, uh, in your packet. Uh, and that, uh, we feel that it meets all eight findings of fact. Any questions of staff, before we open the public hearing?
I think you have one or two, uh, uh, I have a question for you aesthetically, uh, what's the appearance of it? I was looking for an image of the proposal.
Exactly, that's exactly, that was my question as well.
There is a-
Take a light, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, this, there is a, a picture in the packet, a drawing of it. This is a lattice tower, which is a little different, usually we have the monopole towers. Um, again, that is to support the type of antenna that they're putting on here. It is a different type of antenna than we typically see here in Fayetteville, um, because it is something that's just to communicate between their two locations.
Mr. Harmon, you said it's enclosed, I don't, I only see the, uh, site pictures in my enclosure.
It's a drawing, not a photo.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Anything else, sir?
Any other questions for Mr. Harmon before we open the, uh, public hearing? Oh, Council, Councilmember Jensen?
Mr. Harmon, if we can go back to the pictures, um, it was like, one more, okay. See the light in the back, the real tall light back there?
Back here, yes.
How tall is that light?
I am not sure how tall that one in particular is, um. If you can hold that question, uh, I know at least one of the speakers, uh, one is the engineer for the project, and one is one of South River's employees, and they may be able to, to answer that question for you.
Okay, so, I, I wanna ask another question. So, what I understood you say, and what was in our packet, the other location for South River is gonna have this same tower, because they need to communicate with each other. And that is, it's not for cell phones, it's just for public safety is basically what this is for.
That is correct.
And it's, seems to be a lot wider than most towers with the lattice.
Again, like I was saying, most of the time here, we have the monopole, which is just the, the stick-looking towers. Uh, and, but with this one, because of the antennas that are going on, on it, uh, for them to communicate back and forth with, they're different than the typical cell, uh, antennas. And so, it needs the extra support of the lattice tower.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Any other questions of staff before we open, close the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Harmon. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Our first speaker is Brian Lenins.
Mr. Lenins, welcome, sir.
Thanks for having me, my name's Brian Lenins, the address is, uh, one oh-four West Clarksville Court in Cary. In the, uh, the pole you were speaking of in the diagram, that's actually a ninety-foot pole. And the plan is, once the tower is constructed, that we will take that pole down and relocate the antenna to the new pole. Let me give you a little bit of background on, uh, South River and the project. Uh, South River EMC is a nonprofit electric co-op that serves approximately forty-two to forty-three thousand customers, located in Johnson, Harnett, Cumberland, Sampson, and Bladen County. Currently, we're using a leased phone circuits and wireless communications for our automatic meter-reading system, telephones, outage management, supervisory control, and data acquisition. So pretty much the project is, is slated to replace the existing, uh, circuits with the new tower, with a high-speed microwave link that will give us, uh, somewhere around one gigabit of capacity. And according to the engineer to design, uh, the link, they're telling us it's gonna be about a ninety-nine point eight percent reliable link. So we really feel like that the, uh, the improvement in reliability will help our members, uh, help us restore power faster, and, uh, just, just be better, basically better overall for, for maintenance. So, uh, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I do have, uh, Brandon here also, that can help us, uh, whatever you have.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do have a light, uh, couple lights, Councilmember Art, and then Wright. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you trying to help your customers. And if you would, just take this with you, we need some help with streetlights with South River. So, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Art, Councilmember Wright.
Uh, the question on the, the diagram where you show the, the tower, it would've been nice if they had a realistic picture of that tower sitting on the property, so we can get an estimated look at the heights, and how that, uh, the image of that tower looks in the community, but you had stayed at ninety feet.
That's what the pole is there now.
The pole itself, but on the diagram, it says the total height is, I don't know if that is, uh, one ninety plus or minus, and then the tower itself, one eighty-five, can you explain that?
Yeah, the, the pole that's there now will come down, and the tower is actually a hundred and eighty-five feet, and there is a five-foot lightning rod on top, which gives it a total height of a hundred and ninety feet.
So when you say ninety, did you say ninety, or, uh, before, a hundred and ninety?
The new tower will be a hundred and ninety feet.
A hundred and ninety, okay.
That's right. The old pole that's there now, that, uh, that you pointed out in the diagram, that, that is a ninety-foot pole.
The old pole?
That will come out, yes.
The new one is one ninety?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have a couple more questions, sir, Councilmember Jensen, then Hare, and Williams. You go last.
I, I'm gonna ask, I know that there is a, um, cell tower right around the corner from there. And I'm sorry, I did not do my homework, um, cause I'm putting it, I'm putting, do you know how tall that tower is?
No, I don't, I have seen it from the road, though.
But I, I'm, I'm assuming it's less than a hundred and ninety?
That's my guess also, I, I don't really know.
Because a hundred and ninety feet is probably gonna be the largest tower that we have in Fayetteville. I'm probably correct in saying that.
And I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but it could be.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I'm hearing, no, it's not. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Councilmember Jensen, we have Councilmember Hare?
Yes, sir. Uh, when I heard the hundred and ninety, and I'm seeing staff saying that there's a possibility that that isn't the highest, or the tallest, uh, pole that we have in the city, I'm just, again, I'm wondering like others, cause I haven't really seen much of anything that satisfied me in the drawings. Just how that looks and appears within the, the surrounding community area? I mean, what else can we do? I don't know if there's anything that we can do, I, I, I go back to, we had one put on, for example, on Marcus Road many, many years ago. It was so tall that it ended up making it some form of a flagpole, there's a flag that flies on it now. That really does nothing at all for the aesthetics, the, the, the corridor, the, the community, it's really a sloppy-looking job there. Uh, wh- where do we stand, uh, with that, if, uh, this goes through?
Well, as far as the actual aesthetics, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a galvanized tower, so I mean, there's, there's really no way to change the look of it once it's up in the air. I mean, it will be seen, um, and it will look very similar to the other towers that are, that are in Fayetteville.
And I'm assuming, uh, of, of my experience in dealing with them in the past, that others will be, it would be like a co-pole, I can't think of the exact word, with the possibility of co-poling.
It, yeah, and that's not our intent, our intent's to use it for internal use only, but, uh, the requirements of Fayetteville did state that we had to put capacity there for two other users, and, and we just tried to follow that guideline. But our intent is not to go out and market Verizon or, or-
Right.
Or any other carrier, it's, it's, it's more or less for our use.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir, thank you, Councilmember Hare, Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you said this is a new type of pole that you're putting up?
No, this tower is a standard self-supporting tower that's been around for, for many years.
Any other areas that this type of pole is a hundred and ninety-feet tower, uh, is any other, is there any other areas?
Uh, we have one at our headquarters office in Dunn, which is actually a hundred and eighty-foot tower. And it will pretty much be the same look, other than ten feet higher.
Okay, great. Does it interfere with any other towers in the area that, um, tower is up in the Dunne area?
No, it does not.
It does not? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Hare?
Okay, just, ju- just one more, uh, one more question, sir. If, if you look at, photograph one of your actual building site that faces Ramsey, somewhat, give me where that proposed pole will be, from this, from this view, from this view. The one of your actual, yes, thank you.
Okay. I can't see the one ninety-foot pole, but it's probably gonna be somewhere in this area here.
Now, is that in front or behind?
No, that would be at the very back of the property.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh, and sir, I did have a question, so, we keep saying ninety feet, but I guess those are your reference points for the existing poles, but this is actually one hundred and ninety feet.
That's correct.
Which is a big distinction. Um, if this were not granted, does it, does this, does this inhibit your capability to provide service to your customers? Tell me, tell me the purpose of the tower.
The purpose is to put in a more reliable data link between our two offices. So yeah, it's actually gonna help us improve, speed up recovery for, uh, power restoration.
Your second office is located?
In Dunn.
In Dunn, okay, so this is- In Dunn, okay. So this is for you to communicate with the two offices?
That's correct, and give us a more reliable communication path.
And right now, the method that they're using is what, regular phone?
It is actually phone circuits. And as you mentioned earlier about storms, we did have during Matthew, we had outages for several days. So I think with the beefed-up tower and the high-speed microwave link, we feel like that it's going to be more reliable, faster speed, and easier to maintain.
I got you. Okay, thank you. And council, just before we call Mr. Harmon back, I think we have, now, did you have, was there other folks that were sworn in? Were you speaking on behalf of everyone?
If you have any questions about, you know, the tower itself, Brandon with Delta Oaks did the design for us. You know, he may be able to shed some more light on it if you need any.
Okay, all right. I don't see any additional lights. I guess, Mr. Harmon, I think you had a couple of questions for staff? Let's see, Mr. Hare, actually, the other speaker. Okay, we'll give away to the other speaker, if you would, sir. Thank you, sir.
I'm Brandon Waller, professional engineer. I'm with the Delta Oaks Group. We've done the site design for this, and we will be specifying this tower. But basically, I'm here today just to address any engineering-related questions, if the council has any, and...
Yes, sir. I think I have a light. Councilmember Wright?
It may not be an engineer question, but this question would be the size of the operation and how many actual users that will be communicating through these two towers from Fayetteville to, you said Dunn?
Yes, they're...
How many, how many, how is that working, the type of communication you're talking about?
Basically, this is, it's a point-to-point communication for South River. It's a data link between the two office locations. So basically, they need, what it is, it's a six-foot diameter microwave dish, and I guess...
And that dish is on the tower itself?
Yeah, it'll be, it needs to be mounted a hundred and sixty feet above the ground in order to make a connection with Dunn, a reliable connection for their high-speed data transmission. And it's a little bit different than a cellphone tower. A cellphone tower, they basically just, they shoot coverage out in three hundred and sixty degrees to cover the area. This, and this will speak to the need for the self-support tower, which is a very, a much more robust and rigid structure because the microwave antenna, the six-foot diameter microwave antenna in Dunn has to point, you know, there has to be a line of sight between the two antennas. So if you use a monopole in a high-speed wind situation, the monopole will flex back and forth, maybe four, six feet, and that'll break the connection between the two. So that's why they need a lattice tower. There's one over the roof of the building down the street from here, Univision's building has a lattice tower on top of the roof. And they're using similar antennas, much bigger microwave antennas, but it's a similar application. You need a rigid structure so the two antennas, they don't break a connection.
So my next question would be, and I know that the staff have okayed this in the sense that met all criteria of communications, but when you talk about secure communications and this type of tower would seem like a high-tech tower that will be able to pick up communications, microcommunications, is it safety in the sense of other communication apparatuses in the community or the surrounding areas that they could pick up? And will this tower, if we, if it's voted on tonight, the future of this tower, can any other type of apparatus be connected to that, or they have to come back to the council if you want to upgrade? Tell me, how does that work?
The communication system that South River is proposing is, it's a standard microwave dish. These are very common. Cellphone providers use them, internet providers use them. It's just basically a point-to-point data communication. It's, for lack of a better analogy, it's almost like a Wi-Fi signal between, but it's a microwave signal and it's, I think it's about one gigahertz, but it's licensed and it's SCC compliant. It's not going to cause interference for anyone because it's, like I said, it's directed straight at the Dunn Tower. So it's pretty pinpoint, but that speaks to the need for a structure that doesn't sway in the wind, which is why we need to go with it.
So my last question is, Mayor, so you're the engineer pertaining to this project?
Well, my company is, yes. I did the site design. We have a group of structural engineers.
And so have you done these type of towers in other locations and other places? And what is the track record of those for security?
Security to what?
Communication security of picking up signals from other?
Oh, yeah. This is, and I, there, I guess to back up. I mean, it's in South River's best interest that this communication system only, I mean, it's not, it's dedicated to just send and receive from Dunn to the Fayetteville office. So there's not, it's not picking up anything besides a dedicated signal from one point to the other.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilmember Jensen, then Hare and Arp.
So have you already built the one in Dunn, the tower?
Well, my company's not involved with the Dunn project, but to my knowledge, and Brian could back me up on that, but I believe that tower is already constructed.
Yes, the tower in Dunn was, it was put back in the late nineties, so it's been there for a while.
So what is that tower used for?
It's used for our voice radio system to the trucks, two-way communication to the line trucks, bucket trucks, servicemen.
Okay, and it's the hundred and ninety feet?
The one in the Dunn office is one eighty.
Okay, okay, it's, and do you own, I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask this. Do you own all the property behind?
Yes.
So I saw where it was going to go, it's kind of like behind where the parking lot was? Are you moving it way back or just right behind the parking lot?
We're moving as far back as we can on the property, within the guidelines of Fayetteville.
Okay. One of my concerns, and again, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, my concerns is, you know, this is one of our major gateways to our city, is right here on Ramsey Street. And that is going to be the first thing that is shown, is a hundred and ninety-foot ladder, lattice pole. And again, it's just from South River, Fayetteville to Dunn.
That's correct.
And that's why you need it for that communication. And you keep saying microwave, microwave, help me on that.
You could think of the microwave as a phone wire connected from our Fayetteville office to the Dunn office, a dedicated communication circuit.
Okay, and do we know how much radiation there is in that?
No, it's within the FCC guidelines, though. We will be purchasing either a Motorola, a Harris, something that is FCC-approved and licensed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hare?
As our cellular towers, I forgot the word again, I know you did say it, but a pole locate or?
A co-location.
Okay, pole location, a co-location with one pole to another. Was that something that you all considered? Also, between Fayetteville to Dunn with other poles, existing poles?
No, wasn't.
And the reason why was, why not was?
To have a point-to-point microwave was what we require for our communication system, point-to-point.
So a partner, partnering on another pole would not work?
It's not, no, we have to, actually have to have that tower at our office in order to make the connection to our voice radio, our telephone system, automatic meter-reading system, and SCADA system. So it needs to be at the office.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you again, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your explanation. Just so we're all under the same understanding, the reason you need a tower is point-to-point communications. And if I'm correct, I'm not a scientist, but about eighteen miles, you hit the impact of the curvature of the earth. So the height of your tower is based off the curvature of the earth, so you can have point-to-point communications.
That's correct.
I'm looking at a picture of your Dunn office, and you probably can't see it, but I brought this off of Google Maps, and there's a tower behind the building. Is that the lattice tower in the Dunn office?
Yes, it sure is. That's the hundred and eighty-foot tower at the Dunn office.
Okay, yeah, it probably would have been nice to have had a picture of that in your packet. I think it would have precluded maybe a lot of questions.
And we can provide that. I mean, that won't be a problem to get that to you.
And just looking at it, and I'm happy to share, it looks like a pretty standard lattice tower, not atypical from maybe what you might see at a small radio station, an AM radio station?
No, it would not look like an AM radio station at all.
Okay, so give us, just give me a quick, brief description of what it's going to look like. Because I think that's the issue that everybody's kind of concerned, and since we don't have a photograph, we're having to use our imaginations.
Okay, on page C three. It gives you an overhead, shows the three-legged foundation, and then the lattice tower. It is a drawing, though.
Yeah, when I look at this picture, and it's just a bit fuzzy, to me, it looks like a small radio tower and maybe with a couple of antennas off the side. I would assume that's for different, you know, communications equipment that's going to hang on the tower as well.
Yeah, that was just shown for future co-location if it was needed. The tower has been designed to hold co-location.
Okay. And just one last question, will there be any commercial applications hung on the tower? This is strictly for South River?
This is South River's.
Point-to-point communication?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council, we have to bring this item to a head. We'll have to make a decision pretty soon. I did have a question before we asked Mr. Harmon to come back. Mr. Harmon, if you could clarify the basis of staff's decision. Now, council, keep in mind, there are eight finders of facts that we're bound by with the special use permits, and Mr. Harmon can go over those, but I did have a question for these gentlemen before they got away. Was this the only option for this type of tower? I understand the functionality aesthetically, communities that pay attention to their aesthetics or have it. Is this the only design that is available to accomplish what you want to accomplish?
Well, I mean, there are alternate designs, but the most logical and the most feasible is a lattice tower for the...
When you say most logical and physical, do you mean economical?
I mean, a monopole structure can flex up to ten feet in the storms that they're trying to retain reliability of signals. So a self-support might flex one foot in, under the same conditions. So given the height of one hundred and sixty feet that they need to get this antenna off the ground to establish communications with Dunn, the self-support tower is the most logical application. Could a monopole work here? Maybe, but the reliability drops off dramatically in a high-speed wind event, which is essentially what they're trying to protect against is losing data connection during, you know, a hurricane or storm that would knock out.
Right, so I understand the difference between a monopole and what you're presenting. My point is, is that the type that you're presenting, is that the only type available aesthetically that is available, that gives that type of security during high-wind situations, I guess is what you're...
Yeah, the lattice tower is going to be more robust. It's going to be a more rigid structure. It's not going to flex like a monopole. The only other conventional tower that's used is a guide tower, but that's not feasible for this property because you need, that's the, you know, it's a thinner tower but with wires supporting it, and the property's not large enough for that type of application. So we did look at using the monopole, but there's just not, it's just too flexible of a structure at that height. So if it was something, you know, under a hundred feet, we might be able to make it rigid enough to keep from swaying. But given that they need to be at one sixty, and then that gets compounded as well because the city requires two, you know, the capacity for the, the tower has to be designed not only to support South River's antenna, but two additional carriers like a T-Mobile or Verizon in case, you know, they did decide to co-locate or, and that adds a lot more, you know, wind area if another carrier installed antennas on this, and it's just going to make the tower sway even more. So, yeah, I guess it's a long-winded way of saying that the lattice tower is the proper application for this type of communications, given that they need point-to-point microwave dishes that have very low tolerance for not being aligned with one another. And that would knock down data reliability, kind of defeating the whole purpose of, you know, this whole project and endeavor on their parts.
Yeah, I got that. I guess I'm just trying to zero in on what you're saying. The only option for a lattice tower is this?
Yes, it's a standard. I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Harmon, what is the height of that cell tower on Murchison Road that has the flag on it that we have so many issues with?
The one, that was actually done right a little before my time, but I believe it's around a hundred and ninety feet.
So, that is it, but... Okay, all right. Do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Williams, I think everyone else has spoken. Councilman Williams?
Yes, Mayor, my only concern with this tower is the other providers like T-Mobile and other users being utilized in this tower, and they only kind of restrict it to just the river. I believe that I would be able to support it, but I'm kind of concerned about running other towers or other businesses with range kind of out of business.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Harmon, staff's support for this item, based on the criteria, which is our eight finders of facts? Do you want to?
Correct, and just a couple of things to remember. One, you know, if you feel like there's some items that you would like to see in addition to what you've seen tonight, you can always table and ask the engineering group to come back. Secondly, as far as the height goes, typically, communications towers try to stay under two hundred feet. We have a lot in this community that are a hundred and ninety, all the way up to a hundred and ninety-nine. Once you go above, once you hit that two-hundred-foot threshold, there's a whole nother group of federal regulations that they have to meet because of aircraft. And so you do, we do have, I know of at least one area in town that has higher than that, and it actually is radio towers, Councilman Arp, kind of like you brought up a while ago, off of Bragg Boulevard. Those are quite a bit more than the two hundred feet. And so with that being said, your height is not something that is specific in those eight findings. So that is one thing to think about as well. Were there any other questions of staff before you close your public hearing?
Any other questions of staff? If not, Councilmember Jensen? Thanks, sir. This time, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we table this and have the engineers come back with some other drawings or, you know, or a picture or a better rendition of what we just saw.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jensen. There's a motion to table. Is there a second? Second, Councilmember Williams, any discussion on the motion to table to return at a specific time? Councilwoman Jensen, uh, any timeframe in mind?
I would say in the next three months, next ninety days.
Mr. Harmon, how long you think it would take you to confer with this staff to, uh...
How, how long do you think that that information, you'd have it available? Okay, if, if that's the case, I would prefer then it be tabled just to your, your, uh, your, I believe it's set by the March twenty-sixth meeting? Um, and that way, that gives them enough time, but it is a date certain.
Right.
And we don't have to...
Will, will you accept that, uh, can you have a, an amendment, will you accept that, uh?
Yes.
Can you restate your motion, please?
Um, yeah, I didn't write, okay, I would like to make a motion that we table and have the engineers come back with the rendering of the, um, tower.
To be returned on, on the next council meeting?
To be returned on the next council meeting, on different options, I guess.
Thank you, so there's a motion...
March twenty-sixth, I'm sorry.
All right, there's a motion, is, there's, did you accept the amendment to, to that, Councilmember Williams? Thank you, have some discussion on the motion, Councilmember Art, and then Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if I may, Councilwoman Jensen and Councilmember, um, Williams, I, I would just like to see actual pictures of the tower, of the Dunn location, I, I think that's the biggest stumbling point. People just wanna know what it's gonna look like, so if you could take multiple pictures, different angles of the tower in Dunn, so we could have a good sense of what the tower's gonna look like, thank you.
All right, Councilman Chris?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we got a truckload of hundred-and-ninety-foot towers all over this city. Uh, this request is for emergency purposes, for communication, to ensure that they can get electric restored to homeowners and businesses in the community when we have disaster situation. A hundred-and-ninety-foot tower is a hundred-and-ninety-foot tower, it looks like a pole going up in the air for a hundred-and-ninety feet, thank you.
Right, any further discussion on the Jensen-Williams motion? All right, if not, this most, this, your vote is to table, is that a vote, a discussion? All right, Councilman Wright?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I tend to agree with, uh, Councilman, um, Chris. Um, I saw a picture of the, um, the tower in Dunn, we, we pulled that up, and, and I was pretty much satisfied, um, and in the sense that this would be the most, um, appropriate, um, tower because of the height of a hundred-and-ninety feet, uh, and they have to, um, certify wind velocity and whether the tower would be suitable or not that met the criteria of staff, uh, and all the coding, so I, I really think that it would be, um, it, it will be kicking the can down the road, uh, a little bit further, because ev- eventually we, we're going to pass this, because it's for emergency purposes of communication, but the aesthetics of it is what is important, and where they messed up is didn't show us a realistic picture of the tower, and I think to, tonight, if they had done that, it would've gone through, but based upon what I saw on the internet of the tower that they have in Dunn, it would be, if, if you will, it would be the exact replicate of the tower in Dunn?
They could test the motion close.
I'm sorry, um, I'm talk...
Harmon's, okay.
It would be the exact replication of the tower in Dunn?
I believe they said it would look very similar, it will be actually ten feet shorter.
Okay.
But everything else would basically look the same.
Everything will ba- basically look the same, so I'm, I'm pretty much satisfied with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, Council, we have discussed this item thoroughly, this motion is to table, so this vote and the affirmative will be to table to bring back on, no later than March twenty-sixth, so this time we'll ask for your vote to table. Madam Clerk, that is, that motion fails, uh, voting for the table was Councilmember Art, Jensen, and Hare. Voting against the table was Chris, Williams, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Dawkins, and Waddell, so motion fails. This time we entertain another motion, uh, alternative motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we would, um, pass the, um, this request based upon the eight findings of staff.
Of fact, mhm.
Uh, eight facts of finding.
Okay, so, this is a motion by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Doc, Councilmember Dawkins, uh, any discussion on the motion? Were those votes or questions?
Questions.
Questions, all right, uh, Mayor Proton, Moan, and then Jensen?
Mr. Harmon, can you come back up with the, uh, presentation, scroll back towards the beginning where there was also a recommendation that we add, or we maintain, the buffer, the tree buffer, you know, along the south and west portion, and so I, I believe we would need to include that into the motion, that defining a factor there, and so a friendly amendment would be that you accept staff's recommendation, um, to retain the existing tree line buffers, and then they have some other additional buffering requirements in the side line.
Isn't that including the, uh, does that include the eight finders of facts?
Oh, oh, yeah, this is in, a- addition to the eight findings of facts.
It's an addition to...
It's as a recommendation.
Yes, okay, well, I, I do amend that to include the staff recommendations of the tree line buffers along, um, along the south and the west portion of this property, which separates the property from the adjoining, um, townhomes.
So, we have a, uh, the, the second, Councilmember Dawkins, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion, just to restate, that is to accept, uh, the recommendation of staff with eight finders of facts with the conditions that are listed in our packet?
With those two conditions.
The two conditions that are listed, uh, the tree buffer and the compliance, uh, with the plan and final review, uh, any... Oh, my apologies, Councilmember Jensen?
Um, I just wanted to put out there on the eight findings of facts is that it goes with the neighborhood, and I understand what you said, Mr. Chris, you know, and things need to happen, but, so, as we talk about this, and we talk about gateways and things like that, we've talked about putting businesses and saying, you have to change your sign, you have to do this, you have to do that. This is in the realm of our gateways, this is the part that we're talking about, this is in the footprint of coming off of two-ninety-five that we're talking about for people to change their businesses. We have talked about people taking their signs up and having a certain sign put up because it's in our gateways. So if we go ahead and say this is okay, then we have started a new precedence on our gateways.
Okay, Council, uh, Councilmember Wright, we'll back up before discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I disagree with that last statement, um, um, honorable Councilwoman, because I think this is, um, totally different from the aesthetics of a gateway dealing with a tower of a hundred-and-sixty feet, a hundred-and-ninety feet, it's behind the facility, um, so y- y- you could see it from, from the road, but you would have to look up, and it's behind the facility itself, and, uh, the property owners own the property already, and from what I could see, they, uh, they keep that property up, uh, really, really nice, from what the pictures look like to me, so what we're looking at from the gateway's perspective is properties along the gateway that is well-kept with vegetation, grass, and signage, all meeting the UDO standard, and I could see that from there, so when you talk about a tower, um, that meets, um, the federal and state code and things like that, and the staff have, uh, recommended approval, um, from what I could see, uh, that, that's something moving forward that we need, and as Bill, um, uh, Councilman Chris has stated, is that we have a truckload of towers in our city, uh, and from what I see going forward, um, that the aesthetics of those towers is not that bad, and the, the primary thing for us is that, is there a need? And for what I could see, that there is a great need when it comes to, uh, communication in times of disasters, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Council, we have to call for question on this, uh, this motion is to approve what the conditions as listed. We've had discussion on the motion, at this time we'll ask for your vote to approve. Is that everybody? Madam Clerk, that motion passes eight to two, voting in favor of the motion, Councilman Chris, Art, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Hare, Dawkins, Waddell, voting against, Councilmember Williams and Jensen. Thank you. Council, I think we've earned a seven-minute break, see you in seven. I'd like to welcome you back as we return from recess to the Fayetteville City Council meeting for Monday, February twenty-six, 2018. Moving right along to item seven point zero-two. Issuance of a special use permit for crematory in the community commercial zoning district located at six fifty-three and six fifty-seven Hillsborough Street. Mr. Harmon.
Mr. Mayor, thank you again. We actually, I know we did swearing-ins a while ago. The engineer for the project, for this particular project, just got here, and so we just had him sign up, so we do need to get him sworn in.
Hello, sir. Step up and take the oath.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So help you God.
I tell you, boy, where we used our Bible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next case, P eighteen oh-five F, is for the issuance of a special use permit for a crematory to be located in a community commercial district. The properties in question run from six fifty-three to six fifty-seven Hillsborough Street, and they are at the intersection of Hillsborough and Edwards. This is property owned by the Wiseman Mortuary, which is actually their funeral home is across Hillsborough Street from these three properties. As you can see here on this aerial photo, here at the intersection of Cumberland and Hillsborough is the Wiseman's funeral home. These three lots are located across the street. In two thousand sixteen, the Wisemans came before you and had one of these, the lot here on the corner, first rezoned to community commercial. The other two were already CC, and then they came back, I believe, a month later and were issued a special use permit for the operation of a crematory. Well, as you know, our special use permits expire after one year, but the applicant does have the opportunity to get one six-month extension. The Wisemans had several different issues with the property and with their former engineer. They came in toward the end of that first year. They did get a six-month extension. They still were not able, in that additional time, to put together a new set of plans and come back to us and be able to procure a building permit, which is what's required to start the special use permit process, basically. So tonight, they are back before you once again, looking for the same special use permit that they were granted in, I believe, January of two thousand sixteen. Again, just a mix of uses there in that particular neighborhood. There is a church beside and behind these properties. Again, the commercial property is the Wiseman's funeral home. Then you do have residential here, and then a mix of residential and vacant through here. On our land use plan, it is in the downtown, in what's designated as a downtown area, which does allow for, or calls for, a lot of different types of uses from residential to industrial. Just a photo of what you're looking at for the property here. Again, this is the church that's beside it, and then they have a little community building behind it. This little stretch of vacant area is what the Wisemans are looking to use. The zoning commission and staff have recommended approval, and the, we feel that they do meet the eight findings of fact that are listed, and that the city's land use plan calls for downtown uses, that all the uses within the CC district fall within that category, and we feel that the proposed special use is reasonable in the public, and in the public interest, because it does, we feel, fit with that character, that area. Any questions, staff, before we open your public hearing?
Yes, sir, Ms. Harmon. I see a light. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mr. Harmon, just a question concern. With the crematory, when you cremating bodies, you have toxins, mercury, maybe it comes from the filling of tooth and that kind of thing. Is there some type of regulation from the state level, or anything of that nature, to make us aware of what can be a safety hazard in breathing air, of that type of thing? Or should it be in a residential area? Should it be out more in the county area? You know, can you explain that, if that's a, if that's a problem or not?
We actually have these in all sorts of places here in Fayetteville. Some border residential, some are in commercial areas. There is, these are, all crematories are licensed and inspected through the state of North Carolina, and so there's no, no specific licensing here at the Fayetteville level, but the state does have many requirements for the equipment. They have to come in and inspect and approve the equipment that is used for, for the cremations.
Okay. Thank you. Very good, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. This time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll ask, sir, if you can state your name, my apologies.
My name is Andrew Miracle with Draper Aiden Associates. We submitted the-
Can you speak into the mic a little bit?
My name is Andrew Miracle with Draper Aiden Associates. We are the engineer for the project, hoping to move things forward and get this project approved. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Have a little reverberation in that mic. Councilmember, do we have any questions for engineer?
Just for, Mr. Mayor, just for the staff, is there, is there any opposition to this tonight? That signed up to speak?
We didn't have any at the zoning commission, and I don't believe anyone has signed up in opposition.
No one has been sworn in, but this gentleman.
Okay, thank you.
All right, counsel, thank you, sir. With that, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, I look to you for action. Councilmember Crisp?
May I have a question, Mr. Harmon? We did approve a special use permit for this project in January of two thousand sixteen, is that correct?
We did.
Thank you so much.
Ah, I apologize. Hit the lights again. Is it, was it Councilmember Williams or Crisp? Councilmember Art?
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, I'd move that we approved a special use permit to allow a crematory in the commercial zoning district as presented by the staff, with the conditions listed, and based on the standards, standards of the city's development code and evidence presented during the hearing tonight, and that this SUP is consistent with applicable plans, because the city's land use plan for downtown, that all uses within commercial CC district fall under that category, and the proposed SUP is reasonable and in the public interest, because the proposed zoning fits the character of the area. And it's substantiated by the eight findings of fact, which were presented below.
Thank you, Councilmember Art. It's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Crisp. Counsel, any discussion on the motion? Look to your faction, I'll look for your votes. Madam Clerk, that motion passes seven to three. Voting in favor, Councilmember Crisp, Art, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Hare, and Dawkins. Voting against, Councilmember Williams, Jensen, and Waddell. Thank you. Item seven point zero-three, phase five annexation, areas sixteen and seventeen. Public hearing for a resolution declaring costs. Hello, sir.
Hello, how are you this evening?
Doing well.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm here this evening to give a brief presentation before the public hearing about the assessment for phase five annexation, areas sixteen and seventeen. Mr. Mayor, after the public hearing, I'll be available for any citizens that have questions. I understand there may be people here have questions for PWC other than about the assessment, so when the meeting's over, I'll go to the Lafayette Room and answer any questions the citizens have, so.
Well, thank you for that, and I just want to commend you on camera for sticking in here. It was, it was a tough thing to do, the last meeting, but you, you stayed around and you answered every question, even though it wasn't, it's kind of a hostile environment, so I appreciate, you know, you stepping up to the plate.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Yes, sir.
So this is area sixteen and seventeen. This is the public hearing. We will be coming to you for action at your next regular meeting, which is on March nineteenth. So we're talking about two areas here. Area sixteen is the Hampton Oaks Southgate area off of Rayford Road. There's three hundred and nineteen parcels in this area. Area seventeen is Blue Springs Woods, Beacon Hill, Emerald Garden, Hickory Grove, off of Strickland Bridge and Graham Roads. There's four hundred and fifty-eight parcels in this area. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a little overview on the events to date, what the proposed project schedule is, the cost to property owners, and the financing options that are available for the assessment for the property owners. Events to date, so in August of two thousand thirteen for area seventeen, and December of two thousand thirteen for area sixteen, we sent out notices to the, to the homeowners, property owners, that survey and appraisal, where we were coming into the area and were asking for them to allow us to survey their property to determine where the sewer line would go. In May twelfth, council adopted the preliminary assessment resolution of two thousand fourteen, and on May nineteenth, we mailed copies of that resolution to the property owners identifying the area that sewer would be coming into. In May fifteen, area sixteen, and May, June fifteen, area seventeen, we advertised for construction bids, and construction was complete in September of two thousand seventeen. We prepared the preliminary assessment role and submitted that to council at your last regular meeting, in order to schedule the public hearing tonight, and we are asking to you on, at your March nineteenth meeting, to confirm the assessments and set the interest rate for any interest on assessments that go unpaid past the interest-free date. Just an overview of the cost to property owners. This is specific to the guidelines that the council created at the beginning of phase five. So a single-family residential lot, and I emphasize "single-family," not just plain residential, it's single-family residential, the assessment is capped at five thousand dollars. It can't be any more than five thousand dollars. For something that is not single-family residential, there's a per, there's a per-front-foot rate of fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. That rate is the same rate as five thousand dollars would be on a ninety-foot, single-family residential lot. So the non-single-family residential lots, while they can have assessments greater than five thousand dollars, they're assessed at the same rate as the single-family residential are. And there's a, there's a ninety-foot minimum for non-single-family residential, plus the average cost of the lateral charge for, depending on, for each lateral that's installed on that property. So it's so many fifty-five, fifty-six per foot, a minimum of ninety feet, plus the average lateral charge for every lateral. So that's what, that's what, and the, the front footage is basically the amount of footage that the sewer crosses on the street that the property is addressed on. So if you're addressed on Smith Boulevard, it's the money front foot you have on Smith Boulevard that determines what the front footage is. No payment is due until construction is completed and the assessment role is adopted, and financial assistance is available for those that qualify through the city, and we work very closely with the city. We will be having a public, a series of public meetings with the citizens in this area to talk about how the assessment process work, what their options are for paying the assessment, and what financial assistance is through, is available through the city's programs. So customers have the option, prepaying, they can pay in full, no interest within thirty days of notice, so just let me give you the dates on that. So if you act on this on March nineteenth, twenty-one days after that, okay, which would be, I think, April ninth, is the, is the, the legal notice will be published on that, and then thirty days after that date, the assessment is due without interest. So if you pay the interest, if you pay the assessment before approximately May ninth, you will not be charged interest. All right? After May ninth, you'll be charged interest at an interest rate that's set by the council. The council has established a policy that you set the interest rate at, on July first of each fiscal year, that is set on the prime interest rate on that day, plus two percent. So for this fiscal year, that is six point two-five percent. Obviously, that's council policy. Council can act on those, on that in any way it wants, but that's the recommendation you see in your packet, that that's the recommendation, we're making a six point two-five percent. The maximum statutory interest rate is eight percent. So if annual or monthly installments, you can pay annually, six, or monthly, sixty-five dollars per month, based on ten years at that interest rate, approximately. And we, there is a, the PWC employee, who is a deputy city tax collector, who collects those assessment, assessments, all money from the assessment and interest rate from that assessment goes into the project fund to pay for the sewer, the phase five sewer extension. It doesn't go anyplace else, it goes to the project. With that, I'll ask, I'll ask any question, you have any questions?
I did have a, have a question for you, Mr. Brown. So I understand tonight was just the setting up of the public hearing. We will take action at, at the next council meeting, I guess, for the assessment, and this is just a question now, is any discussion being given in light of the, whatever's going on with the bills? I don't want to weigh into that. You have a lot of people that are hurting, a lot of people with, with high bills, they can't afford to pay it. I'm really concerned with the folks who are, happen to be getting sewer extended at this time. You know, this was planned years ago, so you couldn't foresee what the situation would be, but at the end of the day, some of these residents are also hit with high energy bills. Is there anything that PWC has looked at? I know your financial model for this role of, of projects here that you bonded out encourages, or takes the, the interest rate that we've set in consideration, but is there anything that can be done, or any provisions being made for the people who, who may hit, get hit twice during this period?
Good question, Mayor. So there, there are two separate things, so we handle them separately. So statutes, general statutes control a lot of the assessment process and council as far as that, so that we're pretty well driven about a schedule once council acts on that. So we don't have a lot of control on that following council action. But what we have been doing on bills with customers is we have been working with customers who call in and say they have a bill and they're having trouble paying it. So we've reached out as of, I think, the first week of February, contacted, talked to seventeen thousand of our eighty thousand electric customers, and made payment arrangements for them. So we're working with people, anybody who had a bill that they have difficulty paying, if they call us in and work, we'll work with them to make payment arrangements, to try and make it so that they can pay that bill and work with them. I think fortunately for everybody, February has been very mild, and so I think that will keep the February bills down so that it doesn't compound itself. But we are working, we'll work with anybody who's having trouble paying their bill, which we always do, this just has to be enhanced because of the number of high bills. But we will always work with somebody who wants to try and find a way to make payment arrangements to pay their bill. So we have to do it on separate tracks, but we're working with them on both parties there.
Right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes, sir, just have a couple of questions. Talking about the, the bills with, you know, the smart meters, have you, or, or the PWC, dealing with the smart meters, calculated that those meters are accurate in counting the BDUs or whatever for homes, and if, if so, how are you getting this information out? But if not, what is the percentage of inaccuracy, if there is any?
Good question, Councilmember Wright. These bills are billing quality meters, which means over their life, their accuracy, their accuracy is plus or minus one percent. When we, before we installed these meters, we tested a sample of the electric meters to confirm, they were tested in the factory to confirm their accuracy. So they've been tested several times, and this is, this technology that measures the usage is a technology that basically has been around for over a hundred years. The technology that does it electronically has been around for thirty or forty years. It's a proven technology, billing quality proven accurate and tested.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. My next question is the financial assistance for those that qualify. I know that, you know, you're going to be working with the city for that, but, you know, for a lot of people, they don't even apply because they don't think that they may qualify. So can you help those that are listening on the television to, to, to understand, you know, if you have the information from the city, that what qualifies that person to, to get assistance?
Sir, I personally don't know. It's through the Community Block Grant Program, so Cynthia's, I don't know if Cynthia might, you might not have that information, but there's a staff member that has that information that we can make it available to you before you have to act on the assessment, that gives you what the, what the eligibility requirements are.
You know, that would be good information for the public to know, for those that could qualify. A lot of people just won't come because they don't think they're going to get the money or get the help that they need, but the city is really sincere in helping those that do qualify in this matter, so I think that information needs to be put out. If it's not already out there, Mr. Manager, I don't know.
What we do, what I'll do is I'll work with the city staff to make sure council sees that, so you have that information before you're asked to act in a couple of weeks. What we do is, once the assessment is acted upon by the council, we hold a series of public meetings with the citizens in each area and talk through the assessment and walk through their options, including the options they have for financial assistance, but we'll make sure we get that to you.
Thank you, sir. My last and final question is the public hearing. Do you have the date, the time, and the location for that public hearing?
The public meetings?
Yeah, you, you mentioned the public meetings, yes.
So we, we will set that once the council acts, so we want, we want to make sure that you've acted, and then we'll set it shortly, probably the beginning of April is when that meeting.
Beginning of April, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Council, this, remember this, is just to announce the, the public hearing, this is meeting, the statutory requirement for a public hearing. We will make those determinations to approve or not approve PWC's assessment and whatever the interest rate is at the next meeting. Any further discussion on this, Councilmember here?
On that financing of the 10-year, and I know that you, I guess it's, I was thinking that it was, it's 4.25, and you said there's the 2% that's on top of that?
Right. I think, I think back in, I want to say 2014.
Hold on a second, Mr. Brown, I had a message from the city attorney as well as the manager that may be relevant to your question here. Yes, sir, Mr. Hewitt, Mr. McDonald?
Well, I was, I'm going to check with you, sir, and clerk, do we have speakers signed up?
We do have one, one speaker.
Okay, all right. All right. Counsel, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll ask the speakers will come forth. Have they been sworn in?
Our first, this is, doesn't require swearing. Mr. Stephen Williams has signed up to speak.
Mr. Williams, welcome, sir.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Stephen Williams, my address is 6721 Arness Court. I was here two weeks ago at this meeting with a $5,000 sewer bill, and my question is this right here, I apologize for my big hand right there and all of that, but I was just trying to get y'all to look at what I had. This all started a couple of years ago when PWC took a sewer bill, I mean, electric bill that I had at an old commercial building and put it on my sewer bill, and then my, my bill goes up every, every month, so if my sewer bill is only $20-some dollars a month, by the time they charge all that interest at $1,000, it's 50-plus every month, so I'm not decreasing when I pay anything. And my question to PWC was, why didn't you cut me off before it got to $5,000? And the reason I asked that question is because they cut me off before at like $140, and I paid $900 to get reconnected, and I found out last Friday I wasn't supposed to pay but $30-some dollars to get reconnected. So I had thought it would give me my money back, but what they did was, they took the money and applied it to the $5,000 bill that we up here arguing about, and I'm saying I don't owe that, because if you would have took the light bill that was owed a couple of years ago, it would take me 15 years to come up with $5,000 on not never paying them sewer. I've been living there for 15 years, I'm a native of Fayetteville, Fayetteville, North Carolina, I'm a disabled vet, and my only question is, why didn't PWC act before it got $5,000? Why didn't they let it run up to $10,000? And they won't answer that question. Every time I go down there, they look at me as if it's my fault. They told me in June of last year that I had to pay $2,000, and they were turning me back on. I, I couldn't do that, so I walked out. January of this year, the 5th of January, they contacted me, and on January the 10th, I started a payment plan with them for $150 a month. It would take me four years to pay for something that I don't think I should have to pay for. I wanted them to pull up the original electric bill that I'd had from that 705 Gillespie Street and let me pay that, and then let me resume with my life, but every time I go down there, I'm not getting what I think I should get. They don't act like they have done anything wrong, and I just don't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We do have one more speaker, Mrs. Denise Ferguson.
Welcome, Ms. Ferguson.
Hey, Ms. Ferguson.
I'm here for opposition of the cost of the annexation, and for us personally, in 2002, PWC put a sewage system behind our house, and we're connected to that, so I don't understand why we have to pay $5,000 for something that we're already connected to. The neighbors, our neighbors also were connected to that in 2004, and they also were informed that they have to pay $5,000 for the annexation. I don't know if this is an isolated incident, I don't know if just it's a blanket policy that everybody pays $5,000, but I think they need to look at what they have in place before they impose these, this cost to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And what was your address again?
1346 Chilton Drive.
Chilton? Southgate, that's in Southgate.
They just finished that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, counsel, see a few questions, Councilmember here?
Right, well, I think staff was getting ready to say something. On that, on that 10-year, I was going to ask a question about that 10-year finance plan, I guess that's up against that $5,000 connection and whatever else. The rate comes up to 6.25, so were you all getting ready to say something at our senior staff? Okay. I was cut off at the time, so I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Herr.
I wasn't sure which way to go.
So, yeah, sure, okay, thanks. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe it was in 2014, the council at that time set a policy that told the city staff and PWC what their guideline was for what they wanted us to bring back for the interest rates, and the guideline was, the interest rate would be set on the first day of the fiscal year for the entire fiscal year at the prime rate at that day plus 2%. So when we, the first one that we did after that, I think the prime rate was 3.25% at the time, and it was a 5.25 prime interest rate at that one. So that's city council guidelines, and that's what you see in my packet, but obviously the council has the right to set that interest rate at whatever you think is appropriate, just like you have the right to set assessments at what you think is appropriate. So all that is, is a guideline. We're passing along what council has told us is their policy, and we're passing on a packet, and then the council decides what they want to do with that. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir, and since I wasn't sitting in a seat at, at that time in 14, can you bring me up to speed how they came up with the 2%?
I'm not sure exactly, sir, but the interest rate prior to the council taking that action was the statutory maximum of 8%.
Right, I understand that.
And so I think the council at that time was trying to find a way to set a guideline that could get the rate down from 8% in something that they could be consistent in applying, is I think what they were trying to do. Some of the other council members who are here, I'm not trying to speak for you, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, I was still, I still want to understand, and maybe that could be a sidebar, or maybe someone can answer that, I was just trying to see how we added that on top. Now, the 10-year term, that is for paying off within that 10-year, the five?
Yeah, whatever the assessment is, so it doesn't have to be single-family residential, anybody who's assessed has the ability by state law to finance over 10 years, okay? State law spells out for annual payments, but we are willing to work with citizens to make monthly payments. There are no credit checks, there are no fees, and there's no payment for early payment, no, there's no penalty for early payment.
Yeah, you were answering some of my other questions, so if for some reason, a, a citizen has to go beyond the, the 10-year that's listed here term, then that would be worked out too?
That, that would be worked out, that, when the, when the council acts on the assessment, that creates a statutory lien on the property, and what the citizens are, when they're paying that off, they're paying off that lien, so when it's paid off, the lien goes away, and if it's not paid off, the lien remains until it's paid off.
And, and just one, just one last thing, and I know we're doing this, but I just, because I, I hear a lot about red tape and, and just the struggle sometimes that citizens have with these bills and dealing with, so we are being just as customer-friendly as we can when we receive those calls, because it is very, very difficult times on a lot of people.
Right, so yes, sir, so we have several different groups, so like, like I said, there's a deputy tax collector who handles all the collection of assessments, so if I get a call from a customer about what's my flexibility, all those things, that person answers those calls. We have a group that handles connection, and anybody who has any confusion about how that works, why it's this way, about any of that, then they come to me and I answer their questions. So we are, we do understand that this is a big financial commitment for people. We understand a lot of people, you know, have, are living on fixed incomes and are tight, so we work with them as much as we can in the context of state law.
Yeah, yeah, that's, this whole.
Which is the same thing you're, you're operating under, so, yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, and just to kind of bring you up to speed, we, we went through a rigorous debate about that. We knew that charging people 8% was, was excessive, and so the council attempted to be fair at that time to do prime plus two points, which leads us to where we are now. As he stated multiple times, we have the ability at the next approval to adjust that. The problem is, what we ran to before, they built this into their overall financial model, that they would collect so much interest on these assessments, and so they, at the end of the day, the commissioners have rate, ability to change the rates, even if we took the interest up, out of it, they could, they could adjust that part, which we have no control of, so, thank you, Mr. Brown. There's no action needed for this, this is just basically to set the hearing, is that right?
That's right, and if any, anybody in the audience has any questions about the assessment or any other PWC questions, I'm going to be in the Lafayette Room, and I'll stay there until all the questions are answered.
All right, we'll just actually convey back to the, to the commission about the need of the community and, and how they're hurting.
We'll, we'll do so, we have a meeting on Wednesday, and I'll pass it on.
Counselman Herr?
Yeah, just one more thing, and now the, I don't know how we handled this, or, but the gentleman that just came up concerning his bill that he laid out before us, the $5,000 bill, is that being, oh, is customer service working with the gentleman, is there some dialogue back and forth?
Without going into specifics of his specific situation, which is private, and I won't want to do that, he was here.
But it's something ongoing, is what I'm saying.
Yes, it was ongoing, so he was here two weeks ago. I talked to him after the public hearing and talked to his situation. He called me after the public hearing, and I, he said he had a couple more questions, so I directed him to the staff who's working with him, and we have worked with him on that account, so, and I don't, I don't know right now the specifics about the electric bill he raised, I will check when I go back to the office.
Yes, please.
But I do know that a large portion of that assessment is unpaid sewer bills.
Okay, all right.
So, but we, I will, we will continue to work with him, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, counsel, moving right along to item 8.01, consideration for annexation waiver request Restoration Baptist Church, 2107 Clinton Road. Hello, Mr. Nash.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight you have before you a request for a waiver of the annexation requirement that's written into your policy number 150.2. The request has been submitted by Restoration Baptist Church located on Clinton Road, which is east of the city, as you'll see on some maps in just a minute. You received a report on this item back at your February 5th work session, and at that point, the staff told you that we were in favor of the request, and that remains the position tonight of staff. First of all, here on this slide is some of the pertinent verbiage from policy 150.2, which, I'll just read it, unless specifically exempted by action of city council, policy 150.2 requires that a property in the Fayetteville MIA municipal influence area be annexed before sewer service will be provided or expanded. Also, the policy requires that a property be developed according to city standards when it's going to get to PWC sewer. So the church wants to build a new sanctuary building behind their existing building on Clinton Road. They already use PWC water and sewer. They now have learned that the policy requires that they be annexed, so they've asked to be exempted from that annexation requirement. So when we talk about the MIA, this map shows you where it is, at least over on the east side of the city, it's shaded in orange on the map, and I'll try to point out some of the landmarks out here. This is I-95, this is the Cape Fear River, this is Clinton Road, the property itself is right here in the little purple speck, which is, can hardly see at this point because we're zoomed out so far. Areas inside the city right now are in yellow on the map, and the red line is the existing city limits. So this is on the eastern side of the city, and this particular little area it's in is not very developed at all, as you'll see. We're going to zoom in some more on some other maps, this is just showing you the three parcels that are owned by the church that would be required to be annexed according to the policy. Again, we're zooming in a little more, this is a drainage area that surrounds the site, and this is zoomed in even more, just showing you, you can now see the outline of the existing building there in the lower right corner. The area is shaded in purple, three tax parcels are involved. A couple photos of the site, again, it's at 2107 Clinton Road, the existing buildings there in the foreground, the church would like to build a new sanctuary in the wooded area behind. Again, new building in the wooded area behind, you can look down Clinton Road and almost see where the current city limits stop, where those cars are off in the distance. There's an unnamed road leading into the site, the new building will be down there in the wooded area on the left side of the road, and one more photo. So the reason for their request is basically based on two points, they were concerned about the additional cost that they would have to pay for complying with the city's stormwater requirements, and their concern that they would have to pay for sidewalk, installing sidewalks. The site is about 4,000 feet away from the current city limits. Budget impact of this item, if you were to approve the request, there'd be no impact either way on the city. If you actually don't approve it and require that they be annexed, and then they are annexed, it's possible to say that the fiscal impact will be negative for the city, there will be no revenue from the church, either from ad valorem or population-based revenues, and there would be some minor costs for providing police and fire protection. So the city staff's recommendation is that you approve the waiver request by adopting the resolution that's in your packet. The clause was apparently put into the policy back when it was first updated in 2012, because it was realized that there would be unique circumstances coming up in the future, and we feel like this is one of those. We do feel like, though, that this exemption request should be limited to just this one unique situation.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Counsel, do we have any questions of Mr. Nash? I see you got Councilmember Crisp, then Jensen, and then Dawkins. Councilmember Crisp?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Pro Tem. That church is in the county, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's completely surrounded by properties not in the city of Fayetteville, is that correct?
Correct.
So to annex it would be a spot annexation, is that correct? Not unlike spot zoning to some extent? Am I correct?
It looks like a satellite right now, but there is some right of way we can add. It looks like a satellite right now, but there is some right-of-way we can add going down south to the railroad track nearby.
Yeah, but it ain't our roads, the right-of-way, right?
But we're, the state law allows us to make something contiguous by adding some road right-of-way that's nearby.
So if we annex this property, then we got to send the police out there periodically to check the church and everything. If the alarm goes off, we got to send them out there for that. As it stands right now, when the alarm goes off, the sheriff's department handles that. The volunteer fire station out there handles that, right?
Correct.
So I'm just trying to clarify this statement that there's no appreciable value in us annexing this church property, is it?
Not in this case, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Crisp. Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, sir. If you can go back on the presentation. I'm sorry. If you could go back, where you showed the map. One more time. One more time. I'm sorry. One more time.
Okay.
Okay, so what you had told, what I heard you say is everything in the yellow is the city.
Correct.
Okay. So what is that little piece right there? That's a rectangle. I mean, a triangle.
It's another satellite annexation done several years ago. It's a corner of NC-24 and Downing Road.
Okay. So that little place right there is in the city, and everything there is in the county. So if we annex that area right there, it would kind of get closer to that triangle. Because right now, that triangle's just hanging out there by itself. And do we, yeah, I'm looking at those, but I'm just looking what's near us. So right here, we are providing fire and everything for that one little piece right there.
Yes, ma'am. It's in the city, so it's eligible for city services.
Okay. So I guess where I'm coming from is we're setting a precedence if we do this, because we're sitting here saying that if we waive it, where does it stop? And, and I would have a lot easier time with it, but we have this little triangle sitting out there. Does everybody see what I'm talking about? So I guess that's where my, my concern is. And it's, I mean, it's my understanding, we're not going to get any tax revenue because it is a church, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. So my problem in approving this is that we are setting a precedence of it. So that's all I need to say.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Dawkins, and then Art.
Did I understand correctly that you said they already have sewer now?
Yes, sir. The existing building is PWC sewer, water, and electrical customer.
And then when they move, if they move to build a bigger, newer facility, they would need to request sewer for that building? Or is it a separate lot?
Well, there's three lots involved. It looks like the building is proposed to go on top of all three of them.
Okay.
It would require a new connection to the new building. And PWC would not, they've told me at PWC they would not allow them to simply tap onto the existing line that serves the existing building. And so it would be an expansion of PWC service in terms of the policy.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, a really great man told me, "Son, don't ever forget that you annex land, you don't annex people." And I'm, I'm in agreement with Council Lady Jensen on this. What worries me is they may get bigger. I hope they get huge, and I hope they save as many lead people to the Lord as Billy Graham did, the late Billy Graham. But I just, I can't support a waiver, because my understanding is, and this is for the city attorney, if we give a waiver on this piece of property, unless the legislature changes the law, we, we can't ever annex that piece of property. Is that true, Madam City Attorney?
Unless they present a voluntary petition.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins. Councilmember Art, and then Wright?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So why doesn't the church want to be annexed?
In their letter, and it is in your packet.
Now, I know, but I want you to tell me, David.
They talk about the cost of complying with the city regulations, primarily stormwater and having to build sidewalks.
So, so the issue comes down to, it's not that they're not willing to be annexed. It's, it's the UDO. And, and so I don't want us to get lost in the sauce when it comes to what the problem is here. The problem is, here's a church, it's a nonprofit, that they've got a very limited budget. They're more than willing probably to come, now I'm speaking for them, but I'm assuming they're more than willing to come into the city. But when you throw that onerous requirement of stormwater and sidewalks to nowhere, now all of a sudden, and the cost of a sidewalk's $35 a linear foot, I'm told. And the potential of a retention pond, now you've made it physically impossible for them to want to become a part of the city. So my suggestion is, we ought to go back and instead of looking at waiving their request for, for petition in the city, we need to go back and look at waiving those requirements that are making it financially impossible for them to become a part of the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Art. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I echo this sympathies of Councilmember Art. This is a nonprofit. This is a church, smaller congregation based upon what I see, the size of the, the structure there. And, and, you know, to go back to the triangle there with Councilwoman Jensen talked about, somebody had to approve that. And it's there, and they are enjoying the amenities of the city. So, you know, and I understand, we don't, we don't want doughnut holes, but these people are so close, and you're saying that the sewer is already there?
Yes, sir.
They, they already have it. And I can understand, we, we want to expand, and annexation is what we want in, in taking territory or advancing it all, you know, it increases tax values and other values of sewer, and you know what nonprofits have to pay regardless of property. And, and I would say too, we need to definitely look at the UDO to tweak that. And because that's not only affecting this particular piece of property and the request for rezoning or whatever they have, but the overall picture of the future of expansion is what we need to look at. So I agree, we need to look at the bigger picture and not look at only, you know, this little piece of property that wants to be annexed. We need to look at the UDO. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, council. And I'll just add my two cents. You know, I think we have two different things here, and we need to, to really make sure we stay focused on the task at hand. The task, this situation is different from what I've heard mentioned before with another case, where this, this developer wanted to avoid some of the regulatory matters that the UDO brings to come into the city to bring, to provide. He is not a current PWC customer. These folks are current customers, and this is open to the interpretation of the utility, whether they can use the tap that they already have for that existing building, or they have to make a new tap on the same line, which causes them to have to go back through this process with you. But if they were able to utilize, and this may be a question for Mr. Brown, if they were able to utilize the service that they already have in existence now for the new one, you would not be here making this request. Is that correct?
They wouldn't have had to have turned in the request, I guess.
Exactly. So if we added a portion to this building that is currently using PWC service, and they were able to use the same sewer that this building used right next door, like these folks were wanting to do to expand it, you would not be here making this request. So I think that we need to stay focused on, on that. Certainly, the UDO has problems, and, and we're looking to address that. But right now, these folks are just looking to expand existing services. Is that right?
They're wanting to build a new building, which is going to need another PWC sewer connection.
For additional capacity. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
I, I guess my question is, and, you know, what we do for one, we have to make sure we do for everyone. And I, I have two questions, one comment and two questions. First comment is, four years ago, when the new council sat up here, there was a young gentleman that stood up here, it was our first meeting, and said, he did not want to be annexed into the city. And I don't, I'm sure everybody that was sitting up here remembers it. We annexed him in the city. He was a business. We basically said, you know, he was getting PWC, and we basically said, if you want to do business, you have to be in the city. So the first question, I guess I would have to say, is if this wasn't a nonprofit, and this was a small businessman, which was the gentleman that sat up here and could not afford the $6,000, and we made him go into the city because he was a businessman. So I guess that's where I'm kind of struggling on the situation. And he is, this, what we are looking at right now is closer to the city than the triangle. And somebody on the council annexed that triangle. So we're saying, you can be annexed, but we're going to let you not be annexed. That's the way I'm seeing it. So I think if we do for one, we have to do for the other.
Okay. And I'll go to Councilmember Williams with two things. The triangle voluntarily annexed because they wanted sewer services. So I don't think we involuntarily.
But what I'm saying is, if this was a business, if this was a business that wanted to expand, we would not be having this conversation if it was a business.
Well, I'll say it's a little different. I'll go to Councilman Williams, because I was here with you in that situation you were talking about. The difference with that young man is he was not an existing customer.
But again, if this church was a business and wanted to expand, we would make them expand. And, and, and they don't even have to pay the property tax. But a business would give us the property tax. And, and it's not that I'm against it, the church. It's just if we're going to do for one, we have to make sure we, we're fair.
All right. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Could we go back to the slide of the actually picture of the property itself while I'm sitting there? The church, the picture itself. I'm looking at the church here. And to the right of the church, in the parking lot, I see standing water. So my concern is, if we do not annex him and they build on that site, are we doing them a disjustice due to, don't have the runoffs or the ponds or the thing that actually allowed them to operate without being flooded? So maybe in the UDO, something we may look at, in a situation like this, we can make some special acceptance. But I don't believe that we do not give them the best use from what the city provides with all the things that come along with annexing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. All right, council, it's time for action. Oh, oh, I apologize. I didn't see a light. Councilmember Waddell? It's on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Colvin. I, I want to say this, because I've heard this a few times when we, we've had things come before us. I'm gonna, I want to put this out there so that it's very clear where I stand on the if you do for one, you must do for all position. I don't think that that's how we should operate. I think that we are responsible for taking into account all of the information that's presented before us, and then making a decision based upon that information. So I'm not able to stand with that thinking because, one, they are customers of PWC already. Two, there's no additional revenue that this particular entity is going to bring into the city. It will cost, it will cost money. And three, as the legislative body, we have the ability to make decisions based upon the information before us. And the information before us does support, if, should we decide granting this request, if there were, if there was different information that was presented, we may come to a, a different decision. But with the information presented before us, we can, we as a body can make a choice that we might not make for another entity, should they come before us with different information. So I just want to be real clear about that, so that when things come before us, the people that we represent don't expect that I will have that, that, that mindset, that what's done for one will be done for all, because we reserve the right to make decisions based upon the information that's presented to us.
Councilmember Crisp?
Mayor, we have, I agree with Councilwoman Waddell. We've made decisions. We, we sat in here and we gave one man permission to park a double axer trailer in his yard. And then the next one that came, we said, no. So as, as Councilwoman Waddell is saying, we need to look at these things on an individual basis. That's why they come to us. And they're our exception to the rule. I don't know how they got the water and sewer to start with. But I can tell you, if we require them to annex, they already have the water and sewer. How do we require them to annex? They already have it. They can't build, but from, they don't have that much money to start with. Look, look, look what you see. Okay? But my concern is this. Usually, and you said it, Mr. Mayor, this is something of a different case. Because usually people come to us for voluntary annexation when they want water and sewer. They already have it, right? So what's the utility in us saying, you got to annex into the city? They said, no, we don't want to. They already have the water. They got by us. I'm finished. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Mr. Nash, if I remember correctly, PWC has been allowed over the years to serve as a regional provider. They have lines all the way in the Hope County. Took over the infrastructure of Spring Lake. Have electrical, water, sewer, electrical kind of stuff, but it's in the unincorporated areas. So this area was provided sewer, water, and electricity years ago, when the city was much smaller. And when we came up with the new policy, where annexation for sewer was required, back when Mayor Siavani was here, I believe the thought process was, where sewer goes, denser development. And so over the years, people have asked for voluntary annexation to extend, extend the existing trunk lines, extend the existing sewer to areas that currently weren't served by sewer. Is that kind of how you remember it?
Yes, sir. The policy has been, a version of the policy has been on the books, I think, since the early 90s. And it's driven a lot of the annexation petition areas that the staff has been involved in since the early 90s. We generally point that out in our report. And I would like to say, it's shown on the earlier map, that there are three satellite areas much further out than this little area. They're bigger than the triangle area that's been discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right. I think we've captured all the lights, all the comments. Hit the red, okay.
Okay, check it out.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so from this letter is, they're in the process of submitting site and building plans. Folks, you know, if, if we annex these folks and allow them to move forward, that's going to make that property quite a bit more valuable. I'm always concerned when, when a gentleman said he was going to move a grill in Haymount down the street, and everybody's all excited. And he did his plans, and he got all his approvals for the change from residential commercial, and he put a gas station in there beside, in between two houses. So I won't forget that. I was a little boy. But I remember it happening, and, because I grew up in this business. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins. Any others think we have addressed all of it, council? Look for action to approve or disapprove, or a motion of another type.
Mr. Mayor? Make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, sir. Councilor Wright?
I make a motion that we approve the annexation of, or the, the request of a waiver for this church to, that it meets the qualifications that the staff has already.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the vote? Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, and I'm not opposed or inclined. I just, I just wonder if we shouldn't, is there a timeline, Mr. Nash, on this, this application? Is there a driving timeline?
I'm not aware of one, sir, if you're thinking about wanting to table it.
You know, my thought is, and not that I'm looking to table something and not make a decision, but this is a situation where, um, I think if the conditions were set from a zoning standpoint, the, the reason they're asking for the waiver is because they don't want to be burdened by the zoning requirements of stormwater and a sidewalk. My question is, if we were able to come to some kind of, kind of amicable agreement with them to where we could waive that, a- and instead of, instead of waiving them coming into the city, we waive that and allow them to come into the city, that might be the better solution, and, and it would allow us to stand with our policy of, when you seek sewer services, you become a part of the city. I just put that up for discussion and thought.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Art. Want to go to the city manager and then Councilmember Jensen. Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, in reviewing the, um, Resolution G, Attachment G in your packet, um, I don't see that it clearly, clearly articulates that the waiver, if granted by council, is for the, um, construction only of a new church and sanctuary. I think someone, maybe Mr. Dawkins, said that if you grant the waiver, um, that something else could go there in the interim. And just in a quick reading, and David is my grammarian on these things, but it reads that, um, now therefore it be resolved that in compliance with the provisions of City Council, the owner of this property is hereby exempted from the requirement of annexation. And, but if, and someone in a motion that's council's interest would say, um, as long as the plans, as long as the property is developed consistent with the plans presented in the waiver request.
Yes, sir. Um, allow the men that, that, uh, motion, um, to state what the city manager has just quoted based on, um, that waiver.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Nash.
If I could just add, there is an item in your, um, materials that is the approved site plan by the county for the site, and it certainly indicates it'll be a church.
Okay, so, uh, that catches it. So we have a motion, an amended motion, to approve what the conditions as mentioned by the manager, with the site plan that was approved by the county that was referenced by Mr. Nash, that was seconded by Councilmember Hare. Uh, discussion on motion, go to you, Mr. Art, for round two.
Yeah, I just, from, from a, from a legal standpoint, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear. We can conditionally zone this, uh, because that's, that's what we're doing, right? We're saying that if you, if, 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 if we, if we could, if we push this waiver forward, we approve this waiver, then you are bound by that site plan, even if you sell the property? Because that's my real concern. Once, once, once you waive this, and, and, and we say we're not gonna annex you into the city, and you have water and sewer, what precludes the owner, and I don't say they would do this, from going out and selling it to a commercial entity, and now a commercial property is established there? And, you know, on- once, once we approve zoning, we have no, no, no ability to change it. They could sell it and never develop it as they, they depicted it, and now it would be an entity, not in the city, but with water and sewer, maybe even commercial.
But the motion, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Well, I was just gonna address something before you hit, uh, hit the legal part of it. What would stop them from doing it now? They have sewer, and they have water, and so-
Not for a new building, they would have to-
Not for a new building, understood. But there's sewer and water on that parcel right now.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if they were gonna expand to some other type of, of, of capacity, that expansion of capacity would require, that's what's requiring this, uh, this waiver tonight. It would have to come back to us, and they would have to, so that's the, but once we approve the waiver-
With conditions.
Uh, well, my question is, can we condition it legally?
Your waiver is conditioned upon them developing it. You're not rezoning the property. You are, the request is for an annexation waiver. The current motion on the floor is to approve the annexation waiver as long as the property is developed con- consistent with the site plan that is in your packet. So if they wanted to, as, as you indicated, develop something different, that would not be approved, and that would have to come back to the council for consideration.
So we have, we have legal standing, and that's all I wanted to make sure of. We have legal standing based on the current site plan submitted.
That is, that is your, that is the current motion, and that is an acceptable motion.
From your legal representation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Jensen?
Okay, I'm gonna say my last thing about this. And I'm gonna, and I want everybody to understand why I'm so passionate about this. The reason why I'm sitting up here is because I have two neighborhoods in my district that give me, that have the hardest problems with stormwater and things like this. It is Liberty Hill, and it's Patriot Park, because we made exceptions. We had to put a water tower out at Patriot Park, and we have sandbags because of stormwater, and they had to quit building in the neighborhood, because we made exceptions. That is why I'm passionate about it, and that's why I cannot vote for this. It has nothing to do with it, it's, we are setting a precedence. And every time we make an exception, we're gonna get, it's, we're gonna get burned on it, because it's not being built the way we need it to be built.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. Uh, counsel, we will call for-
Just one, one question. I want to make sure, um, because now, I understand her passion, and I do appreciate that. And we all have passions about individual things. But if I'm understanding correctly of what the, the city attorney that represents our-
The council.
Standards across the board. She's saying that we have firm foundation that this can't be twisted in the wind, according to what we are adopting, if is, if it is adopted tonight. Correct, ma'am?
Mr. Hare?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this is my sixteenth year, and I've learned, uh, not to say never, and, uh, not to make promises, because certainly anything can happen. But the council has a policy, uh, and has the ability to make a decision whether to grant or deny an annexation waiver. It is my opinion, for whatever reasons you so choose. It's my opinion that you have the ability, in this instance, to do that based upon their request that they are building consistent with what is in the packet, which is an expansion of their current use.
And that means, as long as they stay within what we, what we have tonight, and not, uh, they will not be going outside of our s- present standards now, and unless it changes for the standards in the future.
That's correct. So I-
Okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
All right, councilors, we call for questions. I will say, we make, um, each case is different, comes on a case-by-case basis. I can't tell you how many times we have had cases for annexation waivers and exceptions, uh, to do it. But have a motion on the floor, it's been well discussed numerous times. This time we'll call for your vote. Is that everybody? Madam Clerk, the motion passes six to four. Uh, those voting in favor, Art, Wright, Colvin, Moon, Hare, Waddell. Those voting against, Chris, Williams, Jensen, and Dawkins. So the motion passes to waive annexation requirements as presented. All right, item eight point zero two, approval of contracts to begin the work for Devonwood Lower Dam reconstruction. Mr. Stone?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, like I said before you, we have a request, um, to do an approval for the contracts for the Devonwood Lower Dam. I have a couple of slides, be quick.
Say what now?
These will be quick.
Oh.
The slides will be. Um, as you remember, the dam was damaged during Hurricane Matthew. Uh, the city performed temporary repair at that time to protect McFadden Drive. Uh, what happened with the dam, it was overtopped, uh, with other dams that fell into the city. The, the, the water scoured the backside of the dam. Um, there was some erosion on the front side also. Um, the city made repairs, did a good job on it. Unfortunately, um, when FEMA went and looked at it, their consideration when they looked at it was that it was, repairs were complete, that it was suffice. We actually, um, questioned that, told them there was other repairs needed, and they asked us to get another engineering opinion, which we did. That was forwarded to them on October, um, seventeenth, around that middle of October. We also received, um, uh, information from North Carolina State Dam Safety Office, indicated a proper repair would require reconstruction of the dam. So entire reconstruction to meet their current standards. Uh, federal regulations through the Army Corps of Engineers provide a two-year time window for repair of the dam before wetland mitigation was required. And that is potential another six hundred thousand dollars cost for mitigation. Uh, at this point, FEMA has not committed to reimbursement for this project. We've been in contact with FEMA, uh, on a regular basis, and also they are coming this week to look at the dam again, so we can have that conversation, um, with the state level and also with the federal level. Right now, city staff is recommending council approve the execution of the contracts, uh, for the project management and design of the Devonwood Lower Dam as presented with the full understanding that the city may not be reimbursed for this additional work by FEMA. Again, we're working with them as close as we can, but there is a chance now that we will not be reimbursed. Just want to make sure we emphasize that. Also, approval will allow project to move forward and avoid the potential wetland mitig- mitigation cost. Again, there's another six hundred thousand dollar, uh, possibility. And of course, we are continuing to work with FEMA on a regular basis to try to make sure that those requirements for this dam are passed on, and that they are convinced that these, um, damages were done by the hurricane. So, that's what I had as far as any points on this, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to, uh, address them.
Do have some lights. Uh, Mr. Stone, start with Councilmember Chris, Art.
Mr. Stone, two questions. Who owns the Devonwood Dam?
Uh, it is maintained by the city.
What will be the total cost? I got two million nine hundred thirty-four thousand dollars plus, is that about right?
Yes, sir. Right, right now, the estimate with all the, uh, issues, we were looking at about three point two million dollars.
Three point two?
Yes, sir. We'll have a better idea once the design is done, we'll have a better, um, estimate at that time.
And we cannot with clarity say that we'll get further reimbursement from FEMA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Why do we maintain the dam? I asked the question, who owns the dam? You said we maintain it. Who owns it?
Um, I, I, that's a good question, Mr. Chris, I don't-
Well, we're on the hook for repairing it, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Art?
Thank you. If I go to the county G I S site and I click on the dam, who's the property owner on the dam?
I am not sure, Mr. Art.
Well, you should have looked eighteen months ago, sixteen months ago, when the hurricane hit.
No, sir, we knew we maintained it, we knew we were, FEMA would not give us money without it, yes, sir.
We don't need to quibble about who owns the dam, okay? If you go to the G I S, what does it say on the G I S?
Councilman Art, the, uh, the G I S shows the parcels that the dam is located on, are owned by the city of Fayetteville.
That's right.
That is correct.
That is correct. So let's not quibble over who owns the dam. The city of Fayetteville owns the dam. So when, when is FEMA coming this week to visit the dam?
Is it Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? And have we invited Congressman Hudson and Congressman Pittenger's office to be present? Since we, we've got a dispute with FEMA?
I do not think we have invited them at this point.
What, can I suggest, Mr. Manager, that we do that? We need to invite our congressional delegation to have their representatives present? Since this, I think you said, October the seventeenth, it went up to FEMA and we've not heard back, and it's February the twenty-sixth? I, I think it's time that we get our congressman involved, and we start banging on doors, and whatever we gotta do to get reimbursement. Uh, I mean, the city and the taxpayers of this city are being penalized because we took prudent measures to ensure that we could keep the road open, so we wouldn't have one more road in this city where a neighborhood wouldn't have a way in or out of their neighborhood. And we're being penalized by that. A- and this is just another example of bureaucratic nonsense where, where we don't apply common sense. And, uh, and so I want to make sure that we're getting the proper recognition from our congressional delegation, uh, and that they're helping us out. We're getting everybody, you know, do we have somebody from the governor's office down, coming down? We need to invite everybody, okay? All the players involved need to be there Wednesday, and if you'll tell me the time, I'll make sure I'm there on Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dawkins, and then we have Chris for round two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Rob. All right, so what we're approving tonight, the total fee, two hundred ninety-four thousand, three fifty, is that what you're, is that what the crest is for? Is that the amount of money that-
We're approving the engineering study, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm just trying to find-
It's approximately five hundred thousand, it's the design and project management, sir.
Okay, so approximately five hundred thousand.
Contracts in, in your packet.
Since my nickname is the money man, I, I always want to know how much is it gonna cost? And where are we gonna get the money? All right, that's my first question. All right, let me also tell you this. I recommend you call Chris Johnson at Congressman Hudson's office. Spoke with her on Friday morning and Friday evening at the chamber event. And she said, you know, what do you need help with? And I said, we need help with dams and working with FEMA. Um, and I think, you know, Dr. Carson got that loud and clear from us, from Housing and Urban Development. We need, we need help, especially, um, on the federal government side. So Chris, K R I S Johnson, Congressman Hudson. Next is, since I am very concerned about the Mira Lake Dam, you know, what is different between the Mira Lake Dam project and this Devonwood Dam project?
Originally, the, the Mira Lake was never questioned that the hurricane did cause the damage. So that, that process has already been moved, we're, we're already in the, in design phase with that dam already, yes, sir. So that, that will, that, the issue that we had with Devonwood is when we did the temporary repair, when FEMA came to look at it, they felt that the repairs were adequate.
Understand, thank you. So this is gonna be different than the Devonwood Dam project, Mira Lake Dam project.
Mira Lake is already moving in, that, this, the design phase is already underway.
All right, so my other pet peeve was the way we communicate with the citizens. And I know we're developing a number of communication tools, according to one of our, uh, our, our deputy city managers, through City Happenings newsletter, and then the strategy is gonna be to share it on Facebook and other areas, a way to communicate with our, with our citizens. But what I want to see is some type of vigorous, uh, the city manager called it, Mr. City Manager, what'd you call it? Vigorous, um, visibly vigorous. The folks, literally, every single day, every day, somebody says, why isn't anything being done on the Mira Lake Dam? So post it on Facebook, post it on the website, put it in City Happenings. Let's spread the word about what's going on with, with these dams. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, we appreciate that, we've definitely been-
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, sir, been told, Mr. Hewitt, we would definitely look forward to, uh, working corporate communications to get the word out. Yes, sir, we have not done a good job with that.
Want to, Councilmember Chris for round two?
Very quickly, Chris called me last week and asked me, is there any way Congressman Hudson can help us? And at that time, I was sick, and I said, I can't think of anything. Well, I'm thinking of something now. And I'm, I'm with Mr. Art. Mr. Manager, somebody needs to contact Congressman Hudson's legislative assistant here tomorrow morning. We're at, we're, we're in a dispute with FEMA, and we think that we're right. This is about citizens, and we send enough money up to Washington that they can send some of it back and help us with this neighborhood and that dam. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Chris. That was, that was them telling us it's almost time to wrap this item up. I would like to ask council to consider a, uh, either a resolution to the congressman, as well as to, uh, the governor's office, uh, for the, about this matter, or either authorize a letter from me with your backing. I would prefer a resolution that sends a stronger statement, unanimous resolution to Congressman Pittenger, Hudson, and the governor's office, uh, for these city-owned lakes and dams for help, uh, from FEMA. And so if, if, uh, as we introduce this motion, if you would not mind incorporating that, and I'll make sure that we get that out the door, uh, this week.
Mr. Mayor, thank, thank you for that suggestion, and I certainly would, will do that. If it pleases, uh, the council, I would move that we approve the execution of the contracts for the project management and design of the Devonwood Lower Dam. Uh, and that, that we would include in that the approval of a resolution, or the drafting of a, of a resolution, uh, for approval by the city council to go forth- for approval by the city council to go forward to Congressman Hudson and Congressman Pittenger's office as well as the honorable governor of the state of North Carolina, expressing our need and desire to have assistance from FEMA in the restoration of both the Devonwood and the Mirror Lake dams.
I'd second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I have ARP write motion. Any discussion of the motion? Council, we ask for your votes. Adam Clark, that's unanimous?
Mr. Mayor, I have an item before you call for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, yes, sir. I would prefer you, Councilmember Chris?
I think it's important. We had some discussion upstairs tonight about item 6.08. And it was stated at that time by a council member that he intended to pull that item from consent. We did not pull that item from consent. Therefore, my interpretation is we approved the adoption of that budget amendment for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I just wanted to get clarity on that before we walk out of here, because we don't want to argue about it later.
Nope, it's true.
We did approve it.
We approved it.
Motion did pass, Mr. Chris. So, is there any, anything you would like to add or?
Yes, sir. I would like to add a motion to adjourn.
All right. See you next week.
Thank you.